Moved in seconded, roll call please.
Councilmember Bushy. Councilmember Bushy?
She said aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, didn't hear that. Councilmember Kurtz?
Aye.
Councilmember Jan Skolati?
Aye.
Mayor Kate?
Aye, that motion carries four zero, thank you. First up, we have a public hearing. It's a proposed camping ordinance amendment and informational report on homelessness, including sanctioned camping program, homeless program contracts, and appropriation of funds. I know there's great interest, we have lots of content. So I shall turn it over to city manager Christina Lilovich to kick us off.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. Just gonna make a few opening remarks and then turn the balance of the presentation over to the team here. I first wanted to recognize a couple of guests we have in the audience. We have the new county executive Derrick Johnson over this way from the county of Marin, who's gonna be here to say a few words about the partnership between the city and the county at the end of the staff presentation. I also wanted to acknowledge Scott Embleach from Esconia Law right in the front row. And Scott's gonna be saying a few words about some of the legal framework to help clarify some of the issues around Grants Pass later on in the staff presentation. I also wanted to pause and appreciate this team for what they have been doing over this last year. All the way up until today, a massive operation happened along the Mahone Creek Path, which you'll see in the presentation. But this is a multi-departmental team, the police department, public work, city manager's office, the legal team, and more. And it's really probably touches every single department in the city. And I'm just very proud and grateful for the team that we have here that's out there every day with a lot of heart and a lot of compassion and a lot of energy to try to address all these impacts in our community. So just to set the stage for the staff's presentation, since the last time we gave an update to the community and to the council, there's been some significant changes in the federal and state and local landscape. So just to mention a few, the Grants Pass Supreme Court decision, it does provide an expanded ability to prohibit camping based on time, place, and manner. It only addressed the cruel and unusual punishment under the Eighth Amendment. The lawsuit that the city has been under for the last year, which is recently dismissed, but we've been in a legal challenge for the last year, was also based on a legal argument around our former camping ordinance being constituting a state-created danger, which is a different legal framework. And that's why we've got Scott here, the attorney, who's gonna go into a little bit more detail about that nuanced distinction and how Grants Pass impacts San Rafael maybe differently than other jurisdictions. Until a couple of weeks ago, like I said, we've had a temporary restraining order for the last 12 months, which meant the city was not legally permitted to enforce its existing camping ordinance that was passed last summer. The dismissal of the lawsuit does now mean that we can implement the camping ordinance that exists that the council passed this past April of 2024, which includes the legal framework for setbacks similar to how we do in our zoning code. So you'll hear more about that from the staff. Governor Newsom's executive order, just to clarify, his state order only applies to encampments that are on state-owned property. So his order was to direct state agencies to address those encampments. I wanna emphasize that everything that Governor Newsom has directed the state agencies to do are activities that the city has been doing to the greatest extent that we can, given the legal constraints. And you'll hear more about those enforcement activities as the staff will give you a kind of a year-end review of where we've been and what we have been able to accomplish. How other jurisdictions respond to the changes in the legal landscape obviously impact us here in San Rafael. So we are keeping a very close eye on what other jurisdictions are doing. Just to call out in particular, in San Francisco, they recently started a program called Homeward Bound, where they will provide transportation to another jurisdiction. However, the program requires that their staff make contact with a family member, an employer, or a friend who's willing to receive and support that individual, and they're asking for that in writing. I also wanted to just make note that we have a similar program here in Marin called Return to Residence. And local service providers have shared that they send approximately 10 people out of the county per year in a similar program where there's someone to receive them and provide support, approximately 100 over the last 10 years. We will continue to monitor what's happening in other jurisdictions. And then I briefly, while I have the floor, I wanted to thank Derrick and acknowledge that he's, I think, 90 days in, he told me today. So he's new to the county. And one of the first things that he and I did was we got together and talked about how important it would be for our respective teams who are leading the charge in both of the city and the county to get together and really formulate this partnership founded in this great state grant that we were able to jointly apply for and receive, the $6 million ERF3 grant. And so we are working really closely in lockstep to make sure we're addressing this as a regional issue. And appreciate Derrick being here. So at that, I'll turn it over to the team.
There we go. Good evening, Honorable Mayor Kate and members of City Council. John Stefanski, Assistant City Manager. I'm here tonight with Mel Burnett, our Housing and Homelessness Analyst. And really excited to be here because this is an opportunity for us as staff to come and present a comprehensive update on the city's approach to homelessness. So tonight's presentation, we have a number of things that we're going to cover. And we'll be providing a brief background and some context setting, as well as an overview of the city's approach and response to homelessness to date. For the council tonight, there are two recommended actions. The first is consideration of amendments to the city's camping ordinance. And then the second is consideration of contracts the city will need to enter into for the development and operation of the planned sanctioned camping area and for providing homelessness-related services more generally in the city. So by way of background, as of the most recent point in time count in Marin County, 2024, there are 1,090 individuals experiencing homelessness in the county. Of these individuals, 788 were unsheltered at the time of the count and 217 were chronically homeless. Now, I'll add that this represents a 2.77% decrease from the 2022 point in time count. But for San Rafael, the 2024 numbers are not yet available. So based off of the 2022 count, we estimate around 348 individuals experiencing homelessness in the city. But to supplement this work, the city did a survey last year of individuals who were living along the Mahone Creek Path and found that 90% of the people who were living there had done so for over a year and that 2/3 of those people had lived in San Rafael for over a decade. Now, the county has had a lot of great success in recent years in housing individuals experiencing homelessness. Since 2017, they have been able to house 737 chronically homeless individuals and 94% of those folks remain housed to this day. However, as we saw on the previous slide, I think particularly relevant for the discussion this evening, is that there's still much more work to be done as we only have 291 shelter beds available in the county for over 1,000 individuals. So turning our attention to San Rafael, we're gonna spend some time on this slide, not a year, but we'll be here for a little bit. The city has been effectively blocked from enforcing our camping on public property regulations since August of last year. So we've been at this now for over a year, really. And as you'll recall, it was this council who in 2023 had made amendments to the city's camping ordinance to comply with the then-governing Martin v. Boise decision. And three days before that ordinance was to take effect, the city was sued in federal court based off of the Americans with Disabilities Act, as well as claims that there was a state-created danger. The court entered a temporary restraining order and then later a preliminary injunction that effectively blocked the city's ability to enforce these camping regulations. From December to February of last year and then this year, the city attempted, in good faith, to implement the direction of the court, which at the time it sought to have the city work with the California Homeless Union and individuals and members along the Mahone Creek Path area encampment to designate camp sites for individuals and establish voluntary compliance with the direction of the court. However, this work was ultimately abandoned because we were not able to achieve the level of cooperation that was needed in order for that approach to be effective. So shortly thereafter, the city refocused its attention towards amending the camping ordinance to address the concerns of the court and to create a regulatory framework that we could ultimately use to mitigate the impacts of encampments. And the city council passed this updated ordinance in April of this year. Following this, the city filed a motion to dismiss the lawsuit. And earlier this month, the court granted this motion, allowing the city to proceed with implementing the amended camping ordinance. And I'll have more to share on that implementation here shortly. However, I will note that during the time of the preliminary injunction, the city worked to identify other regulatory avenues to address the public health and safety concerns related to encampments in the city. As you may recall, in October, November of last year, we enforced the fire code to abate fire risks associated with the proliferation of wooden structures and wooden pallets in encampments in the city. And then in December of last year, the city manager issued an order prohibiting camping on Lindaro Street. And so as you'll see on the slide here, we have a before picture of Lindaro Street and then a picture of Lindaro Street shortly after that order went into effect. And I'll add that for most of this summer, the city has been pursuing enforcement efforts aimed at addressing more illegally constructed structures within our city parks and public rights away. To date, the city has issued 49 notices, resulting in 42 sites now complying with the city's regulations, and seven are currently undergoing an administrative appeals process where they actually have an administrative hearing scheduled for tomorrow. I will note, as a statistic of this work, that the city has removed over 31 tons of debris as a result of bringing these structures down. And it's important to note that when the city undertakes this work, we provide individuals with replacement tents and other items and also provide an option for individuals to store their public property for up to 90 days. So these next couple of slides just show some before and after pictures of the city's work in addressing illegal structures and attempting to enforce on our camping ordinance. And so as you can see, here are pictures in front of Marin Roofing along Francisco Boulevard West. Some additional pictures outside there. Here are some pictures along Anderson Drive, some before and afters. And then the Mahone Creek Path as well. So as Christine touched on in her opening remarks, there have been a number of legal, recent legal actions that have changed the landscape by which the city may regulate and address homelessness within the city. And so with that, I'd like to introduce Scott Embleach, who's one of our attorneys who helped us with this. And he's gonna speak to the Grants Pass ruling and its impacts on us here in San Rafael. Scott?
Thank you, John. Good evening, councilmembers. So in the Grants Pass ruling, I think there's been sort of a public perception that, well, the Supreme Court ruled that cities can do whatever they want now and so there shouldn't be any more homeless people on the streets. Well, that's a gross overstatement of that ruling. The ruling addressed a narrow but substantial issue, but one issue, and that was the Eighth Amendment, whether it violates the Eighth Amendment of the United States Constitution to forbid people from camping or sleeping on streets unless a city provides sufficient space indoors for them to go to. The Supreme Court reversed the Ninth Circuit's decision that had established that Eighth Amendment doctrine. So it essentially removed one legal argument from the unhoused that are bringing lawsuits to try to establish their rights to be in certain places on public property. But that's just one argument. There are many arguments that have been raised in litigation, including litigation against the city of San Rafael. As the city manager mentioned, the injunction that has been tying the hands of the city of San Rafael for a year was not based on the Eighth Amendment, it was based on other legal theories. And because this body amended its ordinance to try to comply with that injunction, we were able to get out of that injunction earlier, just a few weeks ago. But those other legal theories remain. And I guess the cautionary note is the concept that it is now free for cities to take whatever actions a city wants regarding the unhoused population. From a legal perspective, apart from the practical concerns or the humane concerns, from a legal perspective, there's still substantial legal risk to cities because these other arguments are out there. There are other arguments that I'm sure will be developed in other litigation. So unless the cities deal with the practical implications of the Grants Pass decision and the day-to-day homeless situations in those jurisdictions, they run the risk of substantial further litigation, which, as you well know, is a drain on city resources, resources that can be better used to try to help the unhoused population. I can answer any questions when we're done with the presentation.
Great, great, thank you so much, Scott. So and Christine touched on this as well, is that the end of July, Governor Newsom issued an executive order that was instructing state agencies and encouraging local governments to prioritize the humane removal of encampments, including conducting site assessments, providing 48 hours' notice or as much notice as responsible in exigent circumstances, and to provide personal property storage for up to 60 days. And so I just will call out again that the city has been and is currently already doing what the governor's order calls for, to the extent possible, given our legal constraints. So switching gears and talking about the camping ordinance that's now in effect, as a reminder, with the Boye lawsuit now dismissed, the city is able to enforce these regulations as passed by the city council earlier this year. And so the regulations include campsite size maximums, as well as establishes a number of proximity and safety buffers, including 10-foot setbacks from private property lines and public utility infrastructure, as well as 10 feet from other campsites. I will add that camping is prohibited in a city within 250 feet of schools, as well as 100 feet from any of our playgrounds. Enforcement of the regulations only will take place after individuals in violation receive notices and the opportunity to comply. And so again, I just want to clarify that it's important to note that the city maintains a standard practice whereby the city first seeks voluntary compliance and works with its nonprofit community service provider partners to provide additional notice and outreach where available and offers assistance to affected persons, including but not limited to, again, providing tents and sleeping bags. And Mel will know this because she's had boxes of tents at her desk. So now with the camping ordinance in effect, I want to detail just a couple items of note regarding the ongoing enforcement of these regulations. And so I will add that last week, we started with noticing an individual who was camping at the Menzee Slot. But however, this effort's now on hold as a temporary restraining order has been filed against the city, which is blocking us from proceeding, and our legal team is working on that. And again, I will note that the Menzee Slot, which for those who don't know is to the direct west of the Falkirk Cultural Center, falls within a 250-foot radius of Marin Academy. So for Phase Two, this is also now in the works. And so the city last week issued notices to individuals who were obstructing the Mahone Creek Path, in particular, those who are blocking emergency vehicle access. And so this morning, city crews and contractors were out along the path assisting individuals and cleaning up their items so they can comply with the camping ordinance. And so I have some pictures from today's effort of the before and after along the Mahone Creek Path. So looking ahead, we will be noticing all other individuals in the Mahone Creek Path area encampment to comply with the camping ordinance, specifically for campsite size maximums, as well as the setbacks to other campsites and private property lines. And then following this, as we now have the ordinance in place, is that the city will engage in a regular cadence of enforcing and ensure that people are complying with the city's camping regulations. So and kind of building off of what Scott was talking about, considering the recent Grants Pass decision and the administrative burden associated with the proliferation of illegal structures that are being constructed and continue to be constructed in city parks and rights of way, staff has recommended to the city council this evening that you all adopt amendments to our camping ordinance. And so the proposed amendments include the following, first of which is providing the city greater flexibility to prohibit camping or set time, place, or manner conditions on camping on public property in light of the Grants Pass ruling. The second one clarifies a prohibition on occupying, constructing, and affixing structures made of building materials on public property and to allow for temporary shelters like fabric, tents, tarps, provided that they are not affixed to public or private property except with removable stakes on unimproved ground. And then the third is adding an additional safety setback. So this would require campsites be at least five feet from the edge of roadway pavement to ensure safety and to prevent any obstruction of traffic. So just to note that that's where the pavement ends, it's not where the white line is, so to speak, but actually where the pavement ends. The remaining amendments seek to align the noticing protocols that the city has with those of the governor's recent executive order. So now the city will, under this amended ordinance, the city would issue a 48-hour notice to cure a violation of the camping ordinance. However, the city will require immediate removal or abatement when the encampment poses an imminent threat to life, health, safety, or infrastructure, such that exigent circumstances require immediate action. And the city will now provide a 48-hour notice to remove unpermitted structures. And I will note for that one is different from our current process by which it's a much longer, drawn-out administrative process that can take several weeks. And again, just to, I don't think we can say this enough in the course of this work, is that the city maintains a standard practice whereby we work to seek voluntary compliance first. And we work with our nonprofit service providers to provide additional notice and outreach where available. So we go at this trying to take a trauma-informed and human-centered approach first, rather than just coming out of the gate and seeking to just notice people without any regard for them as individuals. And then the last thing that I will add with the ordinance amendments is that we just made a couple definition tweaks just to make it easier and more readable for members of the public. And so now with that, I'm gonna pass it over to Mel Burnett, who's going to talk about the... Oh, actually, I'm not going to pass it over to Mel yet. I'm going to actually call up Captain Roy Leon of the San Rafael Police Department to come up and talk about repeat offenders and the police department's overall approach.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. Tonight, I'm here to discuss the San Rafael Police Department's enforcement strategies and approach to tackling repeat criminal offenders and other criminal activity. For repeat offenders and criminal activity, the use of data-driven insights to identify repeat offenders allows us to allocate resources more efficiently and implement targeted interventions tailored to their specific behaviors and needs. Our strategy includes increased surveillance and supervision and ensuring probation requirements are strictly met. Additionally, our safe team and mental health liaison, Lynn Murphy, will work closely with these individuals to provide essential resources aiming to improve their circumstances, ideally to reduce need for further enforcement, combating open-air drug use and criminal activity. To address open-air drug use and other crimes, we increase patrols and surveillance in high-activity areas. By deploying more officers, we aim to deter drug transactions and enhance overall community safety. Any violations of the law, either outside of a proposed sanctioned camping program or within a proposed sanctioned camping program, will be investigated and properly enforced. Partnering with organizations like Marin County Specialized Investigative Unit is key. This collaboration brings specialized expertise and resources, improving our ability to solve complex and high-profile cases. It also enhances information sharing, streamlines investigations, and boosts coordination, leading to more successful outcomes. Community engagement efforts. Building strong relationships and partnerships with local residents and business owners is crucial. Community members often observe suspicious activities and can provide vulnerable intelligence. By encouraging residents and local business owners to report drug-related activities and fostering a collaborative environment, we can gather information and refine our response strategies. Coordination with the Marin County District Attorney's Office. Regular meetings with the district attorney's office ensure ongoing communication and collaboration. These meetings help us discuss case progress, share insights on crime trends, and develop unified strategies for managing repeat offenders. Together, these strategies will strengthen our efforts to combat crime and enhance public safety. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Captain Leon. And with that, now I will pass it over to Mel Burnett to speak about the Encampment Resolution Fund Grant, as well as the sanctioned camping area. Mel?
Good evening. The city of San Rafael and county of Marin applied jointly and were awarded nearly $6 million to address the Mahone Creek Path area encampment through Encampment Resolution Funds for the Third Round from the state of California. The grant application was submitted on January 31, 2024, and at that time, there was an estimated 65 individuals residing in the overall Mahone Creek area, including along the Mahone Path, Anderson Drive from Lindaro Street to Rice Drive, as well as a previous area on Francisco Boulevard West. The grant's goal is to connect encampment residents to case management, permanent housing, rapid rehousing subsidies, and supportive services to end homelessness. The county of Marin will be contracting with a housing case management provider for three full-time housing-based case managers and one full-time outreach worker. The staff will provide services to the identified grant-eligible individuals who are residing in the areas prior to the January 31 submission date. Additionally, these funds will be used to develop and operate a sanctioned camping area within San Rafael, as well as an interim shelter program to be developed in the future with the grant expenditure timeline. The sanctioned camping area will be developed along the northern portion of the Mahone Creek Path between Lincoln Avenue and Francisco Boulevard West. The planned duration of the sanctioned site is 12 to 18 months, and the site will then be returned to its intended use after the program ends. City staff have planned for up to 47 tent sites to be set up within the sanctioned area, and those will each accommodate one individual per tent. The map shown on this slide is a schematic of the proposed sanctioned camping area. The white line shows existing fencing that will remain as-is, and the red line shows a site perimeter that will become an eight-foot-high chain-link fence. The yellow square showed tent site locations, as well as one security guard station that will be located at each gate on Lincoln Avenue and Francisco Boulevard West. Additional temporary assets include six portable restrooms for residents, that two of which will be ADA-accessible, and there will be six hand-washing stations, one portable restroom that will be designated for staff and security personnel use, office units to be used by program management staff and housing case managers, a designated pet-use area, and designated smoking area, storage container to hold replacement supplies, garbage dumpsters to be serviced regularly, and community meeting spaces for residents and staff. Additionally, at least four fire extinguishers will be placed throughout the site for fire prevention. This map shows the proposed sanctioned camping area in orange and gives a perspective of where and proximity it is to the surrounding community that the site will be located. Development of the site includes the installation of the previously mentioned eight-feet-foot chain-link fencing and new gates added to the entry points at Lincoln Avenue and Francisco Boulevard West. Electrical repairs to existing pathway lighting and increases to provide lighting around security stations, as well as adding power provided to the temporary security and office units will be added. Operational elements of the site will include security personnel to be on-site 24/7 with at least two guards stationed at each entrance and one to two guards who will be monitoring the site internally. Staff propose contracting with defense block security for these services. Program management and janitorial services will be provided on-site. These staff personnel will provide direct on-site service to participants through issuing and setting up replacement equipment, acting as additional points of contact for housing case managers, assisting with essential needs of residents, and providing connections to services, even helping with filling out housing applications. Staff propose contracting with FS Global for these services. Additional regular operations include service of the portable restrooms, regular garbage pickup, and weekly shower service. Participation in the sanctioned camping area will be voluntary, and any unhoused individuals who are eligible yet not electing to participate will be permitted to camp elsewhere in the city in compliance with the Camping Ordinance 19.50. Staff have worked collaboratively with Marin County Coordinated Entry and community partners to identify individual... collaboratively with Marin County Coordinated Entry and community partners to identify individuals who have been residing in the Mahone Creek area encampment prior to the January 31, 2024 submission date. Individuals from this identified list will be prioritized for outreach and enrollment based on the following: plaintiffs in the Boyd versus City of San Rafael lawsuit, their VI SPADA scores, length of time residing in the Mahone Creek area encampment, and previous participation in the city's service support area. Enrolled participants in the sanctioned camping site will be required to abide by code of conduct, including a no-visitor policy. Additionally, there will be a no-camping buffer area instituted along the southern portion of the Mahone Creek Path. Why a sanctioned camping area? Due to the shortage of adequate shelter space in Marin County, the city proposes establishing a sanctioned camping area to provide targeted services and structure for individuals currently residing in the Mahone area encampment. The city's service support area successfully connected over 70% of participants to permanent housing. This new program aims to offer greater stability, safety, and enhanced services for participants. We believe this approach will also provide greater stability and public health and safety for the concerned community members, oh, sorry, public health and safety for the immediately adjacent businesses and larger community. The program will include, as mentioned, both around-the-clock security program staff and phone numbers for concerned community members and businesses to call. Why along the Mahone Creek Path? ERF III requires grant funds to be used for providing alternative shelter in the general proximity of the existing unsanctioned encampment area. Local service providers have also recommended that a location within walking distance to food and services would benefit participants and minimize disruption. Additionally, the city lacks suitable public land elsewhere for the program, and the year-long search for private alternatives was unsuccessful. However, we are still committed to finding another location for a future interim shelter project to be funded by ERF. Staff are also bringing the proposed scope of work and contract for Downtown Streets Team Services for the 2425 fiscal year. Downtown Streets Team, or DST, has been working in San Rafael since July 2013 and provides employment opportunities, housing-focused case management, and supportive services to individuals experiencing homelessness. Over the fiscal year 2324, DST removed a total of 175,000 gallons of debris from the downtown area, canal neighborhood, and encampment areas in San Rafael. In the 2425 fiscal year, DST will operate with at least 20 team members at a time, focusing on encampment hotspots while maintaining regular cleanup efforts in the downtown, including Fourth Street and the canal neighborhood. The costs associated with the establishment of the sanctioned camping area will be funded by a $1 million state appropriation provided by Senator McGuire and the County of Marin, along with approximately $4 million of the $5 million ERF III grant. While the county has yet to receive the ERF III funds, it will be able to provide the $1 million from the state appropriation in September, pending a board of supervisors' approval. Site preparation and setup costs of the sanctioned site are estimated at $500,000, including engineering, fencing, utility repairs, and necessary assets. As shown in Table 1, the total cost for site preparation, setup, and contract services for the sanctioned camping area is $2,256,500. Staff is requesting an appropriation from the Grants Fund 283 in this amount to support the initial costs and contracts associated with the sanctioned camp in order for the city to begin this work immediately. Staff is also requesting corresponding authorization for the city manager to execute and enter into contracts for these services, as well as for the Downtown Streets Team contract, as shown in Table 2. For the DST contract, the fiscal impact is $200,000. Of this, $40,000 is funded by the ERF III grant, and $160,000 is funded by the fiscal year 2425 general fund budget. This slide shows a high-level breakdown of ERF III and state appropriation funds. In total, with the sanctioned camping area, interim shelter, and additional grant-funded programs, city staff anticipate a total expense of $5,47,376. This slide shows ongoing communications and community outreach that city staff have been pursuing ongoingly. Staff will continue to post updates to the city's homelessness webpage and newsletter. These will be provided posted on a bi-weekly basis. The city's webpage has also been updated with comprehensive frequently asked questions and videos detailing updates on items such as the camping ordinance and homelessness response. City staff have also been in contact with the Santa Fe City School District to address school concerns and guardian concerns. City staff and defense block security contractors also anticipate hosting regular Zoom meetings starting two weeks prior to the sanctioned area camp participant enrollment. This will especially provide time for surrounding businesses to address concerns and receive development updates on the sanctioned site. And contact information will be provided via QR code on signs posted on the gates outside of the sanctioned area camp and on the city's website, so that people can contact staff for any concerns. Next steps. Near-term staff effort will be focused on ongoing enforcement of the camping ordinance and the development of the sanctioned camping area. Additionally, staff are working to identify a site for the creation of the interim housing solution. Second reading of the ordinance is scheduled for September 3, and the effective date will be 30 days thereafter. If approved, the amended camping ordinance would go into effect on October 4, assuming no legal action that would restrain enforcement. The recommendations are to waive the reading and introduce the ordinance amending San Rafael Municipal Code, Chapter 19.50, Camping on Public Property. Staff also recommend to adopt the resolution appropriating $2,256,400 from the Grants Fund 283 to support the initial costs and contracts associated with the sanctioned camping area, and authorizing the city manager to execute contracts in the amount of $2,2400 for the first phase of the ERF III grant program. This slide shows staff contacts, as well as the city's homelessness webpage, where you can also find a link to subscribe to the housing and homelessness newsletter.
All right. And with that, we now like to invite County Executive Derek Johnson to come up and share a few words on our ongoing partnership with the county.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and city staff. That was an excellent presentation, and I just want to thank you for inviting me tonight. I'm here on behalf of the County of Marin. I'm still getting my sea legs here in my new role. And I would say one of my first priorities is really has been to connect on one important issue that I know is all important to all of us here in Marin County is housing and homelessness, and the two are inextricably linked. I spent the majority of my career, most recently down in San Luis Obispo as the city manager, and we had the unfortunate fact that we had some of the highest per capita unhoused individuals in the state of California. The situation was not too dissimilar here, what you're experiencing here in San Rafael. And I certainly recognize, you know, having been a city manager, that it is uniquely different to have homeless encampments in an urbanized area where they're right adjacent to businesses and homes compared to the challenges that we have here at the County of Marin. They are both incredibly difficult. And one of the things that I'm very thankful of having come to Marin County, and I made a deliberate choice to come here, is that there were people that really understood that the issue of homelessness is complex, requires a combination of compassion, and we also need order at the end of the day. And I've been following the evolution of the ordinance here that's before you tonight, and your staff has done an